This is Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, Budget Work Session with Common Pleas Court.
Good morning, thanks for coming in.
Morning.
Always a pleasure.
This is very informal, it's a work session. That's what kind of what we wanted to do was just kind of get everybody in here. It seems to be going pretty positive so far, I think the, you guys, did you watch any of this? With the domestic relations judges, did you see that one?
I watched it.
Oh, did you? Oh. Wow. I'm sorry.
She's fifty of the hundred views that you got.
Believe it or not, we're getting more views on this than we are at our regular meetings. And I think it's because everyone had the counties going, you know, what's gonna happen? So, it's been pretty productive, I think, Casey.
Agreed.
I won't say which departments, but some of them we found, you know, the revenues didn't even know they had them. I won't say which ones, it would have been embarrassing, but they had some changeovers, so they didn't really know some of the accounts that they had. And that's what we're kind of trying to find out, is what do you guys have that you can help us out? You know, that's what we're looking for. And so usually it's the other way around, you guys are coming saying, hey, we need general fund money. And so, we're kind of doing that. We're looking at other mutual services that we can share, because I know, you know, that you guys are pretty lean and mean, you know, so I know that's what's going on. So, we just, that's what this is all about, so. How do you want to start this out?
Well, just some general landscape questions. We have a spreadsheet for the common pleas, we have one for the common pleas, belt probation. Then there's, then there's the, there's the non-operating, and that one kind of...
That jury commissioners, I think.
Then there's jury commissioners, but the non-operating one, kind of a...
Where's that at?
There's the indigents. That's, that's, that's the indigent.
It is?
Expenses. That's the non-operating. There's this.
And of course...
I don't know if you want to, I can start introducing, introducing us, but Judge Yvonne Bremke, I'm one of six judges at Lorraine County Court of Common Pleas, General Division. Like I said, I've watched the videos, and I think you all have some questions, and I think we're prepared to answer that. I have with me Sherri Klausert, Court Administrator, and Deb Tenzey, Deputy Court Administrator.
Very good.
Always a pleasure to see you. In the spirit of the holiday season, I'd like to say that we are thankful for your partnership and the positive impact that we make together.
Thank you. That's what we're trying to do. So, we all have the same customers. So. As we go forward, the, we, our goal was, we had predicted in the middle of twenty-four, when we passed the twenty-five budget, we, we overspent a little bit on purpose, because, and we, everybody got their request. With the, with the admonition that if we didn't have revenue increase for twenty-six, that we were, that twenty-five budget would pretty much be our twenty-six budget. So, where normally we look at people and say, you know, three or four percent increase is a beautiful thing. The reality is that our, our prediction is unfortunately looking more true, and that is our revenue stream for twenty, twenty-five is pretty flat to twenty-four, and we expect it to continue through twenty-six. Mostly due to kind of a leveling off of the economy, so. Because most of ours is sales tax, that's, you know, so. So, at the end of the day, we're looking at this time as, you know, the twenty-five, we've, we've got the graphs where Casey put in to show you twenty-five, you know, spending trend, and, and, and they appear to be on target. And then, then the budget for twenty-six. And our goal is to see if either through increased revenue from special revenue funds, or through some trimming of some of the line items, that we can get back to the twenty-five budget for a zero increase for twenty-six. Now, that's our goal. Okay?
How much time do you want to spend in this meeting? Well, I say that in just because I think what you have in front of you is our tax budget, and our tax budget always comes in higher, because it's always easier to come back down. And, you know, we didn't know in May what we were gonna, what we were going to see as far as revenue goes. So, I think if you look at what, the new budget that we gave you, that we are right in line with our twenty-twenty-five budget. So, yeah. So, if you have something else to do for the rest of the day, you know, we could just cancel this.
Do you have to pick that kind of, that size?
I'm sorry.
She's got a magnifying glass, really quick.
We got younger judges now.
John Goll's watching, then you should come in here.
Yeah. I put my stuff when it gets that small, I put it on eleven by seventeen. I'm doing for cataracts in January.
We don't have any budget for a magnifying glass.
It will get, it will get back. And, and we do recognize that, you know, twenty-five, we, we, twenty-four and twenty-five, we inserted the hospitalization.
Right.
That was in the twenty-five budget that we, that we approved, and so, you know, dealing with the increase in the hospitalization is a departmental issue now, and we're not holding, you know, we're not holding against your budget. The fact that we moved postage and stuff to all of the departments to be managed. So, there's, you know, the general fund will see, you know, pretty much a break even on that. It'll just be in, in your budget instead of ours. So, we're allowing for that as, as one of those areas that will be an increase over twenty-five, because we did move the postage. And you guys are one of the biggest users of the postage.
Yeah. Yeah, our juries especially.
We are, and the juries, I think you'll see an increase. We've had a large increase in jury trials this year. In fact, last year there was nineteen total jury trials, and between all six judges, and I've done seventeen myself this year. So, we've had a huge increase across the board of all, all six judges. So, as a result, obviously, our, our jury expenses go up. And, so that, that does increase the postage. Regardless of that, though, and I see, and again, I've watched the prior videos, so I know that you're looking back to twenty-one to see the increases in the budget over, from twenty-one to present. Ours isn't necessarily an apples-to-orange comparison, because of some changes with the way, number one, the state organized the probation department, because that's, you know, a big part of the budget, and the increase that you're looking at. And second, because we did receive some COVID funds, and there was a year where we decreased our budget by, was it eight or nine percent? During this time, so...
You got direct COVID money?
We did.
We did.
We, we had...
From the, from the state or...
From the state.
From the state?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I mean, when you're looking at, I think there was a comment in the prior meetings that we had a lot of revenue. And, I'm not sure that's supposed to be a compliment, but I think it, I will take it as a compliment, because our revenue is twofold. Number one, the grants that we receive, but obviously those are very specific to the use. But our probation department, I think we pride ourselves on many of the probation staff being funded by state, and, and in the case of my recovery court, federal fun, funds. And there aren't very many from our probation staff that pull from the general fund, as far as the...
Their salaries.
Salary is concerned. There has been, and I think Commissioner Moore, you indicated it, Judge Cook, there has been a change in some of the hospitalization as far as what's covered under the grants, which would increase as far as hospitalization.
When you say that, does that mean the changes in the grant that will allow the coverage of hospitalization?
Other way around.
Okay.
That's why when you see we have an increased number of hospitalization, we haven't hired any new staff. In fact, that sort of fluctuates, but we're all, always about the same number.
That's what I was trying to do, that under the radar, just kind of go over there and talk to the judge and say, hey, what's going on? It shows you got twenty-five or twenty more employees. And we go based on the insurances, that's when I went and talked privately to say, that's when you came in and said, no, 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 this is what's going on, it's, it's money that's...
Just for the hospitalization.
Really going to adult probation, not the common pleas.
And when we go back to twenty-one, we're not using that as a, as a litmus test necessarily, but we're using it to say, well, COVID was our problem, we had, if we developed any bad habits, or had all kinds of stuff going on that was, that normally wouldn't go on, when was the last normal time, and that's twenty-one?
And for us, it's actually...
So, at the end of the day, we look at...
I'd say twenty, but...
Well, it's actually, for us, would be before that, because we did start getting COVID money. People were throwing money at us, so you'll see during twenty, twenty-one, and, during, yeah, twenty, twenty-one, and maybe part of twenty-two, you'll see our budget went down.
Right, well, the first wave of COVID money, you know, was the payroll protection plan and that kind of stuff. So, it was very targeted, and it, and it did cover costs that if people, it allowed us to keep salaries going, you know. It did the same thing for businesses, almost everybody got the PPP money. The COVID money from the, the care, no, not the care, what do you call it?
Well, the Affordable Care Act from twenty...
No.
That was in twenty-one, we got that money.
ARPA.
Yeah. Affordable, I don't know, the government's got all these.
Whatever ARPA stands for.
American Rescue.
Yeah, American Rescue Plan.
That was, that was the broad-based money that kind of got involved with, where the county got sixty million dollars, which was like unheard of.
Yeah, we never got any of that.
So, it, well, you got your own. So, at the end of the day, we're looking, that's why we look at twenty-one, that was pre-ARPA. Okay? And we look at employment levels, and we're looking at expenditures to see if, you know, if, if hiring got, got, got away from us, to look and see if salaries got away from us, and, and salaries are always a challenge.
Yeah, I can speak on hiring, the jury commissioners, by statute, we're, we're required to have a Republican and a Democrat, two employees, that's what we have. Probation, again, is flat as far as employees, and common pleas, there's no new positions. In fact, we sort of repurposed, we have a large increase of civil filings, which is very place to strain, and criminal. Our cases, our cases are, per judge, are, were the fifth highest in the entire state. So, that places kind of a strain on our civil magistrates, who handle most of our civil matters. So, we sort of repurposed our foreclosure magistrates, they're still doing foreclosure, but foreclosures are somewhat down since they, since the peak of oh-seven, oh-eight. And they've started to do our protection orders, which were kind of a strain on our civil magistrate. So, we're probably one of the largest courts, if not the largest, that doesn't have a dedicated protection order personnel. I think our counterparts in DR do have a dedicated protection order employee magistrate, and we don't. So, we've sort of repurposed in that way as well. But we've been flat as far as employees, and even before that, our last hire was our IT person who is paid out of special revenue funds, so it's not a, hasn't been a drain on the general fund at all.
And actually, Judge Two, with Wellness Court winding down, our probation director, instead of just keeping those two positions, she repurposed those to positions that came open, so...
What wound down?
The Wellness Court. Judge James Morality retired.
Right.
And Judge Bremke took it over for this year to make sure that the people got the care that they needed till they could graduate. And those two positions will now be taken off of the TO for the probation department. So, our probation director is pretty frugal with making sure that they are staying within their guidelines, within the grants. And, like I said, instead of like keeping those two positions, she's repurposed them to positions that came open. So, will be two less.
Yeah, and as far as, I know you're gonna get on, get to the special revenue funds. Again, as far as the, the compliment, I'll say, on our revenue, number one is grants, number two is, is our filing fees, which go into our special revenue funds, which can only be used for certain purposes in some, in some regards. However, we, and again, I've watched all of the budget meetings, this is the second-to-last one, and I know not everyone is paying salaries from their special revenue funds. We are. Not only are we paying that IT position, we pay some probation staff, we also pay...
Mediation.
Mediation.
Foreclosure.
Foreclosure. So, we're paying quite a bit in staff out of the special revenue funds, which again, isn't a drain on the general fund. We also pay, we just, in, in December eighth, we're set to launch our new case management system, which was ordered to be done by the legislature back in, like ten years ago. And so, and not only have we paid our portion of that, but also the clerks have not contributed, we paid that out of a special revenue fund. So...
Were you ever paid in? I thought he was...
No.
Judge, can I add something as well?
Yes, sure.
I also wanted to add, our judges are really good at granting release to the jail with, on a GPS supervision. This allows the person to be released from jail, but provides safety for the community, because of their GPS supervision. It allows the person to be out, working, go to court, and it takes that body out of the jail. I asked the probation director, as of September twenty-fifth, we had spent two-hundred-four thousand, two-hundred-seventy-five dollars in grant funds to pay for that GPS that came out of our grant. At about twelve dollars per day for that GPS supervision, we paid for seventeen thousand, twenty-three days for people to be released this year. If those same individuals had stayed in the jail at eighty-four dollars a day, it would have been a cost of one, one million, four-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars to the jail.
Well, that's at the average of eighty-four.
At an, at an average of eighty-four dollars per day.
But I would actually argue it's higher.
It may be higher than that.
Because what, a lot of times, when I use my GPS funds, it sometimes is for medical furlough, in which you're paying a deputy to sit one-on-one with somebody, so that's much more than eighty-four.
Right. And then, in addition to that, we give a flat rate to the jail each year out of our TCAP grant to house anybody that's eligible, like a felony four or five, non-violent, to house those individuals, instead of going... We give a flat rate of twenty-five thousand dollars a year to the jail on top of that. But, that's money that's not coming out of the general fund, and it's also saving the jail. So, I'm not sure if there's any other entities that use their grant dollars to help other county entities.
Well, that's good information. That's one of the more complex things that I've seen since I got here, is the balance between the prosecutor and their vision of how things should be prosecuted, the court's vision of how things should be adjudicated, and the cost to the jail. And they're, and they're all together, and, and, you know, you can make a change in one, and it affects, affects the other two. And, you know, it's a delicate balance, but it...
And that's why we try to be good partners.
Yeah.
Because it's beneficial to all of us.
Casey, have you looked at...
I'm working on, I'm working on updating, but they've definitely reduced...
What we're getting is like, we got from the sheriff, is something a little bit more fine-tuned from what we were dealing with in July.
Yeah.
Ours is too.
So, I'm gonna continue to ask my questions based on the information that we had.
Go ahead.
You know, and I'll get this printed in larger print. Somewhere in there will, will, will be the, the final thing, but we appreciate the fact that, you know, everybody recognized the environment we're in, and our goal was to have people voluntarily look at, at the best places, because we don't know your operation, we may cut things that are absolutely, you know, critical, we may cut them too much and other things not at all, so, you know, you folks are the master of your ship. And as long as we get the numbers where it needs to be, you know, then, you know, we don't, we don't care, you know, the pieces of parts and how we get there. I have a question, though, concerning, you said special revenue, and unless I missed it, I didn't see any, any special revenue except for...
Yeah, I don't see it either, Casey, before you listed.
See, there was no revenue in the non-operating.
Well, I saw a total revenue only in one column. Is that right? That's right. General fund.
Pardon me? Special revenue.
It's on the very last page, total common pleas budgets.
One that I just put some...
On the very last page.
Oh, here, here you go.
Yeah.
Commissioner Moore, can you put your microphone to the left? Thank you.
So, there's a special revenue fund that says special projects.
Yes.
So, what, what kind of uses can we have? There's, there's about a million and, almost a million and a half in there.
Well, what we've done with it in the past, and what we intend to do with it, is we do, as said, it's special projects, we build, we don't expend all that money all the time, we pay our IT staff out of there, and that's what we buy our IT equipment with. We have purchased the cameras that are in our courtroom, because the cameras that were in there previously, this was probably five or six years ago, because it was just, like, the day Sherri started, they came in and started to install the cameras, so she looked like a rock star. But, the cameras were so bad that the sheriff said, you know, I know these people sitting in there, and I can't identify their faces. And, at the time, you didn't have the cash to do that, and so, we upgraded on our own. We have upgraded the jury seating over time, that's, that was expensive. We also upgraded the jury seating in the jury assembly room as well, we've replaced all the seats that were in the chairs. We were very frugal, and that also, that's all we did, was we had the seat part, portion replaced, because it was, they were threadbare. What we did with it in twenty-twenty is we purchased all the equipment that's in our courtrooms, that it, you know, for Zoom and for all the technology that we have in there currently. That technology is now old and starting to break, and it's very difficult for us to get parts at this point. As a matter of fact, Judge Walther is updating his courtroom first, so we're taking all of his old equipment, and we're saving it in the basement, so that we can use that until we get our new, till we get new equipment in our courtroom. But, you know, the, even, like, the microphones are not compatible, so you have to have special microphones. And Judge Walther's getting rid of some of those microphones, so we're saving those and using those as ours break until, until we can get a new system. We're looking at the new technology. We're looking at the new technology now to see if we want to just upgrade with the company that we had previously, or if we're gonna go with a new company, but we intend to replace all that. Last time we replaced it, it was seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And Judge Cook had gotten us a grant as well for like a hundred-and-fifty thousand that year, so...
But we also pay salaries from that, that special revenue fund, right?
Yes, we pay the IT.
But, and sometimes probation, when you're short, like Chuck's salary?
No, no, Chuck's doesn't come out of that.
Oh, no.
Yeah, not of this fund. And then, so, we're anticipating this is gonna cost us a million dollars this year, if it cost us seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand last year to update those courtrooms. So, there's, you know, like, a million four in there right now.
We've, we did hire Converse four and a half years, well, five years ago, let's say, in order to help us with our security walls. Is there any way you guys can help us out mitigate those costs with these funds?
I think if you, we've actually, we've actually been trying to find out what the cost of that is, and, and if it's for our staff, you know, we're more than willing to probably pay our share. I have, of course, I have to take it to the judges, that's up to them, but...
As long as you're open for the discussion. As long as you're open for the discussion, that's all we're looking for, Casey. We don't know, some people don't have any money. We're still, you know, we're having that protection. We're just, we're trying to figure out a way on those carrying costs as they move forward. You know, what can we all at least do to mitigate our costs to.
If you wanna shut the microphones and the video off, we can talk about the case management system for a minute. Okay.
This is all, this is all like kinda combined moments right now until.
Okay.
This is information gathered.
No, no, it's not a matter of screaming. It's just, it's a, it's a security issue. That's all. Okay.
So the question becomes with the IT, you know, the, plus the legislature this summer, we, we, we got a mandate from two directions. First of all, the legislature said that the county commissioners are gonna control the cyber policy, because the exposure for government is just humongous. And so they gotta, somebody's gotta be responsible, as we found out. The second thing is that our insurance carrier has already identified that if we don't get everybody into the house, that we won't be able to buy coverage next year, because, you know, we did get attacked. We successfully defended it, but we got it through somebody that was using their own system, and we have to do business day-to-day with each other, so there was a pathway open. It still doesn't change the fact that we spent untold, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars on getting that thing fixed. And if the insurance company feels that there's exposure out there, they charge for the exposure, or they don't write the policy. You know, just like, just like driving your car. If you got a terrible record, you, you're either gonna pay a lot for insurance, or you're not gonna get insurance at all. So when you say IT, how are you, how are you staffing IT today? How are you managing IT for the courts?
We have an IT director, and we think at some point we will be adding one more staff member for IT.
So you have one person right now in IT?
Yes.
Because we don't want to touch the software. The software and the servers, the stuff that, that you folks manage, you know, that's not part of this. Part of, you know, the cybersecurity is the access to that equipment, you know, to make sure that it's filtered and protected. So we just want to make sure that we don't have, as we go through all of these, that, you know, you have the staff you feel you need for your software, your servers, case management software, whatever you have. But the, but the cybersecurity, the Conversant piece, you know, that, we've gotta get that all into one house. But we are looking at, at some people were spending money on their own system, and we'll be using that money to help pay for Conversant. And somebody went to Conversant. Somebody that we met with over these hearings had gone to Conversant and gotten, and gotten a number on their own. And, and so, you know, that made life, made life easy, but we've gotta keep it in one house, and so.
Well, actually, Todd sat in on our, when we interviewed our new IT director, and he, our new IT director, Cody Rose, had also, with the company he was with previously, had used Conversant. So they already had a rapport, and they, they talked a lot about how that was, it was gonna be handled. And Todd seemed to think that we would get a better rate if all of us go in, as you say, under one umbrella, as opposed to going in department by department.
It's not a matter of rate shopping. That's always nice, but the, the insurance carrier that we currently have has said, if you guys don't get this thing taken care of, we won't be back.
I, yeah, I, I would, because I knew you were gonna ask how many IT people we have. And we only have the one IT person. We are interested in hiring another IT person out of this fund that you're, you're questioning. And I want to emphasize, when you say we're lean, we're really lean. We have one IT person, and we have, you see basically three departments. I mean, probation has sixty, around sixty employees, we have the courts, and we have the jury commissioners, and that's one IT person for all three. When I'm in the middle of a trial and my IT goes down, he's running up to help me. So, you know, that's really lean compared to, like I said, I've watched all of the hearings. I think we, we probably have the lowest per capita of IT. Additionally, I think as far as our special revenue, for us to only have that one point four in that special projects fund is pretty low in comparison, budget percentage-wise, to the other departments as far as what's in their special revenue fund. So we can speak with the judges, and I think maybe if we had a better idea of the number, that might help.
And before you, before you hire that second person, I mean, you're certainly welcome to, you know, if you think you need it, but make sure you include Todd in that, because.
We do.
By, by reallocating some of those, like postage and, and hospitalization to the, to the, for the various electives and departments, we're also, we're taking in that staff, and we're, we're, we're increasing Todd's budget. He, in fact, he's got a new hire just in the last thirty days. We want to dress them up so that if, if, if it's, if it's a hardware issue, and, and, you know, and we, we've got the brands fairly standardized, we can be the backup for everybody, which means that we don't have to put, if you need one and a half people in your IT department, you can't hire half a person. You gotta hire two. So we want, we want to take that responsibility, and we'll take that budget, not for the control, but for the cost savings.
We appreciate that. And I think we kind of look at, at IT in this county sort of like, like, like the fire, like fire, firemen, right? And you couldn't hire one department full of firemen for all of California, so they each have their own individual one. And then when there's a problem, they all come together. And that's what we've always done in the county with the IT, and it's worked well. You know, you have to have, you have to have your own guys there to deal with the everyday problems and issues and the small fires that pop up. But when there's a big problem, we all come together.
And the fire department is a good, is a good example, because they, they effectively manage in Lorraine County as a regional fire department. They've got, they've got computerization and so forth, that when there's a call out, you know, they don't drain one whole city. They take some equipment from three different cities, so that there's still protection left behind. It's a, it's a heck of a system. You know, now we gotta get the equipment washed out of it, because we have three seventy-foot ladder trucks in Lorraine County.
Fortunately, I don't have to deal with that portion of it.
And one mayor told me, the only, the only time it was out of the fire station was for the funeral for the, for the slain officer in Lorraine, and they had it on the bridge, holding the flag up as, as the procession went by, so.
Well, I'm thankful that that's the only time they've had to use it.
Yeah, so.
Any other question?
Who's the presiding judge? Is it Cook or?
Cook is presiding, Judge Ewers is administrative.
Okay, that's, okay, because I was trying to find out.
What's the difference?
Presiding handles more of the security issues.
And handles, he's presiding over all the judges.
For all ten judges.
And, you're right, you're right. And administrative is more day-to-day operations.
Just for the general division.
Gotcha. Well, how'd you draw the short straw there?
I'm Lee Senior.
She didn't show up to a meeting.
Judge Freeman Senior to me by four days, so here I am. I do have a finance background too, so.
That's obvious. That's obvious.
I appreciate that.
So is there such a thing at the, for common police, as court costs when, when there's?
Yes.
That's the money going into those special revenues.
That's where the special revenue is.
So you know which one goes to which special, which revenue?
Well, actually, when somebody pays a court cost, it's broken down.
Yeah, it's, that happens at the clerk's office. They have a list of what they pay.
What percentage goes?
What gets paid, yes.
Okay. Well, that was one of the questions Judge Cook asked me. We don't know, the, the three commissioners haven't agreed on what, how to move forward yet in regards to a public defender's office. We are still looking at that. When I talked to Judge Cook about that, I, I thought it was a presiding judge that gets to pick two members of the board. I told him, he wasn't really supportive of it, until I explained to him, I'm not looking to do it. I'm looking to experiment, maybe with one, like maybe a municipal judge with maybe, and let's say Lorraine or Aliria, and say, let's just try it small, and, and see if that works. And he was really on board with a, that kind of a style to start out, to, to get the bugs to work out. But he didn't know. I said, well, the, the presiding judge is the one that picks two board members. The commissioners picked three. We formed that board. I've gotten all the data, and we're gonna just say, here's all the data. It's, you see my files in my office. I said, there you go, board. It's up to you now. Tell us, you know.
Yeah, I did want to comment, because in your prior video with the DR, you had mentioned that the costs had gone up a hundred and twenty-six percent, and you questioned why that was. I do, again, I don't think, I think it's an apples and oranges comparison, because what happened during about twenty twenty, Dewan came down with a mandate that said, if you want reimbursement, you have to increase the, the rates to a certain amount. So you all did that to get your reimbursement, as you, as you should have under the mandate. But I don't know that you can do the apples and oranges comparison. Additionally, I already told you, we're up, jury trials a hundred and forty-seven percent. Now, that's criminal and civil, but I would say probably ninety-nine percent are criminal. It's going to cost more to prepare and proceed with a jury trial. So with our, you know, court appointing fees going up, that's sort of the reasoning there. And when you indicate that there's only, there's a small percentage receiving a larger amount, I wish we could get that expanded and, and trickled to others, because we, you have to qualify. You have to qualify for certain degrees of felonies. Not everyone can take a murder. Not everyone can take a capital case. Right now, we have a capital case going on. It's going to be costly. And not everyone, you know, can take a life rape. So you have to qualify and, and go to those classes, for which, again, this is something I did prior to taking the bench. You pay for all the classes out of your own pocket. You pay for your secretary out of your own pocket. You pay for your, your insurance out of your own pocket, everything. So when you were talking about that number, you're not talking about an attorney netting over a hundred thousand a year. They're paying their expenses with that, and that's expenses you're gonna pay under a public defender. But, you know, like I said, I, I wish we could expand it, but there's just not, and I just got two letters from attorneys last week, saying that they're pulling out of court appointments altogether. So, you know, I wish that there was a larger number of attorneys that do take those more serious cases, because we do run them ragged. I mean, we're averaging, how many trials a week?
I'd say two to three a week.
Two to three a week, and it's, you know, that's, that's a lot.
Oh, I see you in quite a bit, a lot of the serious cases, so appreciate it.
Well, and I, I think what you see too is, you know, two new judges, a new prosecutor, and sometimes that, that results in larger, just a different style, and larger number of jury trials, at least initially.
Well, but you're getting tougher on crime.
He told, he told us the same thing in his hearing. In his meeting, he told us that, you know, he, he was on purpose doing more trials and less mediation and negotiation.
Well, everyone wants tougher crime, but they want to pay for it.
Oh, that's, that's, that's a good one.
But by the way, when you talked about, now you're, you're one of the last two, I have to take, I have to take responsibility for that, because you were scheduled ahead of three of the other ones, but I, I had, I had misjudged my schedule. I had to have Teresa rework the schedule, so that's why you're here today.
Lucky, because I was able to extra prepare. Yeah, and you know, you know my dad, Jeff, but he always said, save the best for last, because I was, you know, the fourth child, so.
Well, we wanted to make sure you had a chance to look at all the other hearings that come in really prepared.
Yeah, that's what I did, so.
Yeah, I want to add with Judge Brinkley too. This year, each of our judges averaged one thousand two hundred and sixteen incoming new cases. That's like in the top five of the whole state.
It is.
And then, and then on top of that, they have a clearance rate of ninety-four percent. So, a clearance rate meaning that the, they get cleared in the timeframes required by the Ohio Supreme Court. That's like, it's a, it's a really good statistic that speaks very highly of all six of our judges. In addition to the cases have increased, since I've been here eight years, the cases have increased every single year of the amount that are incoming, in addition to the, the protection orders that come in.
Well, I will say too, the new chief justice has made an emphasis on clearing cases in a timely manner in criminal cases, criminal, believe it or not, even the most serious murder trials. I have six months, even, even if they waive speedy trial, to clear a case and have it be timely. That's, that's very quick. So, you know, the civil cases, we get a little bit longer of a timeframe. But that's been an emphasis for me, because quite frankly, it doesn't benefit the defendant, who may or may not be sitting in the county jail, but regardless, it's a, it's a cloud over their head. It doesn't benefit the, the victims, who, again, a cloud over their head. And it doesn't benefit, really quite frankly, any of us to have these linger around. So sometimes you can't help it, but, which I, I think there has been an emphasis amongst our court and statewide to clear cases more efficiently.
That's awesome. Well, the reason why I'm going after and looking at public defenders is, I don't think too many of us at a local level really know what they're doing in Columbus. They're doing everything they can to push it all back on us. They're, they're cutting left and right. They're putting a lot of pressure back on us financially. I, you know, even though, you know, we got, we're getting like eighty-two percent reimbursement on the public defenders, at one time was fifty percent.
Well, it's been, it's been lower.
Yeah, you were probably, you were when it was fifty percent.
Lower than that even.
Yeah, it's forty.
Well, I thought, I thought fifty was statute. They changed the statute where you can't go less than fifty.
Oh, it was thirty-two percent one time, yes.
Okay. So good. That's why, you know, I'm looking at it.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm gonna look at it, because, you know, we're at four point five, four point eight million last year. So we're looking at the efficiencies, if it's efficient or not, you know. Talking to one of the attorneys who's actually a legislator, I won't say his name, but he's like, oh, I'm conflicted. I goes, because, yeah, I think it's small businesses, which is what attorney is, a small business, this helps mitigate some of their costs of running their offices. So the seventy-two people that receive money, a lot of them, you know, I saw a lot between thirty and fifty thousand, which is a good number, to mitigate your office expenses, you're providing services elsewhere. But what I've seen through, throughout our process so far with everybody, is Lorraine County's lean. Our people are not wasting money. We're not.
I agree.
And unfortunately, we are the recipients, I think, of a more national trend of the abuses we've seen in DC. And we were, I think, the sales tax could have been a result of that. We could argue all day, because all, even the three of us have our own opinions of why it didn't pass. But I think it's just such an anti-government, anti-tax sentiment, we felt that by having these kind of working sessions to show people, here's where we're at, here's the pay board, here, this is, we're showing the public everything, and we're lean.
Well, Commissioner Moore, if you, I don't know, I take a position on public defender's office either way, in either.
I know you're going to, but go ahead.
No, I mean, if that's what you feel is appropriate, but I wouldn't.
Make that decision. How does the board that we're gonna pick?
Judge, our, our concern is, it's at eighty-two percent, but I was told, if it's correct, that that's the budget that the state provides, but if the fund gets oversubscribed, they've, they've committed X dollars, so that eighty-two percent could drop to seventy-five or seventy percent.
Or I'm afraid.
If the fund is oversubscribed.
And, and I, I understand that, but if you're talking from a financial standpoint, and, and again, I'm probably one of the most successful judges over there. If you want to know how, you know, I ran a small business, you know, solo practitioner firm for over ten years. If you want to know the expenses that go into that, and, and what you're going to expect of the public defender's office, certainly contact me. But I think there's maybe a misunderstanding and, and a lack of knowledge as far as the court system go, because you're talking municipal courts all the way from Vermillion to Avon Lake. You're talking a statute that makes the public defender's office salary commiserate with the prosecutors. So if you're talking a numbers game, which I think that's what I'm hearing, you know, I, I think you really gotta look into it, because it may not be what you think it is as far as financially. If there's other reasons, that's fair.
But that's the board. That's, we have to pick the board. We try to get as much data that we can for a board, because, you know, they're not getting paid.
Right.
Whoever gets on there, they're not getting paid. So we're collecting as much data, and I'm glad that they can come talk to you, because I know some of the other judges said the same thing. We want, you know, we want to talk to you, we want to talk to you, because it's not gonna be me. It's gonna be the five-person board that we choose, that's gonna come back to the commission and say, here's what we have.
Yeah, and I mean, you're still not eliminating your court appointing fees. For example, one of my colleagues has a three-person co-defendant rape case starting in December, and the public defender's office can only represent one of those, and those are serious offenses, in which you're gonna spend a lot of money on the other two as well. So again, if you're talking a numbers game, it's something to consider, obviously, open to all options, but I don't know that it's gonna be financially what you think it is.
We don't know either, but we have to ask the question.
Sure.
We gotta find out.
We're finding a lot of questions haven't been asked for decades. So, you know, we're asking those questions, trying to make sure we're doing the right thing. And, and we have no predisposed, you know, outcome we're looking for. We're just saying, you know, can we manage this number in a better way? That's all.
Sure.
I, I think that having these conversations in the public eye is a good idea, because I think a lot of times taxpayers are reluctant to spend any more money when they, when, it, it's just like when you get, when a bad review, you go to a restaurant and you get, and ten people are there. One of them gets a bad meal, well, they're the ones that, that say something in public.
They do the advertising for you.
Right, so, so, you know, the other nine that everything went fine is, you never hear from them. And that's sort of the way it is that, you know, the public hears when something bad happens with government, and they don't hear the good things.
Yeah, most people just want to be left alone, do their job, have fun, and just don't, they trust that we are gonna be doing what we're supposed to do. And I'm hoping these hearings are showing everybody, all two hundred and forty they're watching.
That we're spending their taxpayer, they're spending their tax dollars responsibly.
Here, I don't see, I'm trying to find the access, you know. I just, it's just very tough to see.
My, my concern is the seventy-two percent of the people that didn't vote.
Oh, we're gonna have that debate now?
I'm just saying, you know.
I don't know if that's typical of, you know, if there's nothing, nothing big on the.
Well, it's the off election.
Yeah, it's an off-election year, whether that's typical or not.
Would you like me to show this?
I don't know. Do you think each page that we did, or the page, why don't we do this? I don't know. Do you think each page that we did or the page, why don't we do this? Do you have theirs?
I do.
Yeah, I would show theirs.
Can you show theirs?
I, I went through, and like I said, they, they got very close to the twenty-five figure, like, so with the reductions.
So they are at the twenty-five.
Actually, I actually think it's like.
They're right there.
It's almost less than the twenty-five.
So I've got the common pleas.
And if it's, it's less, but just slightly less.
Hospital, yeah.
So how much, how much?
With no hospitalization.
How much of a reduction from what we have? Or is it?
About three hundred K total, over, over all, over all the budgets.
But if they're at what they did last year, that's perfect, right? That's kind of what we're looking for, right?
That's.
Okay. So can you show those three? Because I want public records requests for people saying, I want, you know.
This is common pleas.
What's this one, common pleas?
This is common pleas.
Provided to us by them. Awesome.
All those red numbers, those are reductions over the years.
And then.
In this case, red is good.
This one is common pleas adoption.
I think it's, it's, it's good to see that we, you know, that we do make reductions when necessary. We look at these budgets, we don't just, we don't just say, oh, let's put a percentage increase on everything and make call it a day.
No, I've seen that even before, over the years, you guys are really good.
And then this common pleas jury commission?
What is the daily jury rate these days?
Twenty-five dollars. You want to be a juror?
I never turned it down.
Okay. I'll keep that in mind.
I got thrown out the last time by Judge Birch because he said, you've been in more courtroom than I have.
That's all I have.
Are there any other questions you have for us? I have a question for you all.
Sure.
All right. So, obviously, we don't own the building over there. But there was a security assessment actually in front of me, which wouldn't be public record for those watching. And in twenty twenty-three, that makes some recommendations to the layout of the building for security purposes. And then, and then actually, your deputy administrator requested a subsequent assessment in twenty twenty-four, all of which recommends changes. And I guess the judges in our, of course, of our meetings and discussions, and Judge Cook as presiding judge, has indicated a, a real desire to implement those changes as far as for the safety of our, our staff, the public in general, the staff of the other courts and prosecutor's office that work in that building, the clerks. And so when you're talking about your budget for twenty twenty-six, I guess I wanted to make sure that that's a priority.
We, our, our hope is that we will preserve the capital expenditures part. Everybody thinks that's like, you know, building a new jail. That's, that's not, there still needs to be capital expenditures in our general fund budget. One of the issues we had here, there was no, there was no capital funds line item to go to to say, we're going to take care of things every year as they occur. And the backlog, when I got here, was horrendous. We just ended up putting a million dollars in the, in the HVAC for you folks, and we, we hope that it'll be ready.
My courtroom was like a hundred degrees and all of the IT was blinking red and shutting down because it was so hot, so I appreciate that.
Well, it took, it took a while to get there, but it got, it let go so long that, you know, it just, the, the cost of the project, it just kept mushrooming. And so we've continued, we're, our goal is to try and maintain capital fund because prior to that, everybody had the attitude that capital expenditures was something you did when you had a little extra money. And, and it has to be something you do every day. That's why the, you know, your, your building is not the only one that's behind in what we would consider normal maintenance and upkeep. And then to do the changes, that would also be a capital expenditure. But obviously, it would have a high priority, but first thing we've got to do is get the budget under control so that we still have a capital expenditures budget.
That's a solid yes, right?
I should say, there's a change.
Well, we just spent money for a space assessment in which we'll probably be looking at consolidating.
You'll be contacted probably in January.
And we'll be consolidating a lot of these outline organizations and probably start selling properties that we have. We have a lot of properties.
You have, you have a floor that's empty?
I have, I have a plan for that.
Everybody has plans.
Well, we gave you a sign in your courtroom, that's what I'm saying, you know.
But, you know, there, there, pretty soon we'll have an empty floor in this building because we've consolidated, we led by example. We, we took our staff from the fifth floor. And as you go in, you get off the elevator, you've seen, that's half the staff in front of you. The other staff will be moving in in December in the other half of that room.
Which would be a great spot for a public defender's office.
But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, we're getting an impartial, third-party, nationally recognized, they're, they'll be interviewing you folks for your, what you see and what you got. But they also know best practices of the rest of the world, so it will wash the politics out of it and so forth. But our goal is to condense the space we're using, which will lower our operating cost.
And that's fine. I, I think the security is separate and apart from that.
Yep.
Because this isn't a space that's going to be consolidated. It's mainly, well, I don't know, I won't say in public, but it's an area that wouldn't be consolidated, and I think it is, it should be a priority. I think, Commissioner Moore, you indicated, you've seen me in the paper, had a case last week in which there was an incident in the courtroom. You know, until you're in that situation, you don't appreciate the security. And, and the sheriff does a great job at providing security over there. But we need to give him the tools in order to do that, so, you know. And I've always said, hey, I ran for this position knowing that there's, you know, security issues. But, you know, my staff's just coming to work just to do their jobs, and I want them to be secure and, and the deputies in the front. So, you know, I do want that to be a priority.
Right. And we'll be looking at that. In fact, we also talked to the sheriff about who's reimbursing him for his, his, his work and security and who isn't. We're also looking at the, we're also looking at the, what's that?
We're looking at how the revenue streams to help create, to get his cost, so.
Yeah, and I do, I did, I did hear you mention that to the sheriff. And in regards to the SROs and the reimbursement, there is no statutory obligation to provide security to schools. There is a statutory obligation to provide security to the county police court, revised code three eleven point oh seven, and I've highlighted it for you all, so.
I hate it when you say, Ohio revised code.
So, it's quite different than the SRO positions where there's not a statutory obligation. There is a statutory obligation.
We're looking at all of our statutory obligations that people think are statutory obligations that are not statutory obligations, so. Because there's a lot of people that assume that they are, you know, and they're like, hey.
You want to interpret it better than the Commissioner Moore, you feel free to.
No, no, this is what I'm looking at, this kind of stuff in which we're like, you know, do we have to do that? No. Should we do it? Maybe. But guess what? If we don't have the money for it, then we have to take care of what we have a obligation to do.
We have a lot of things that we do in Lorraine County that are desirable, but they're not mandated or required by law. And we're hoping to get the budget done to where we don't have to eliminate some of those valuable programs, but they're just not mandated, and if we don't have the revenue, we don't have the revenue.
Sure.
And we absolutely have to get the taxpayers to understand that they can trust us with their dollars.
And then, everybody took it that I, when I said this, this is going to hurt if we, if we, if we're not careful. I wasn't talking about the employees. I was talking about the public that didn't vote for the tax, who may wish they had if services, if all of a sudden they go to somebody's office and there's a two-hour wait in line. You know, you know, there's, there's a direct relationship between our spending and the service we deliver for the public. And as I said, they're all our customers, you know, they're the same people.
Any other questions?
No. You?
No, that's all I got for you. I can provide you the assessments if you want.
Do we have those?
I think Dan has them.
I'm sure you do.
Dan does.
Okay. But we're trying to catch up, but after twenty years of kicking cans down the road, you wouldn't believe how many cans are laying there.
Thank you.
All right, Todd, we're done.